All right, so we have on camera right now Rod Taylor, who is running for county commissioner. And he's going to begin by giving us a two-minute introduction as to why he is running for the position and what his qualifications are.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. My name is Rod Taylor. I do not have a radio show. That's Rob Taylor. I decided to run for county commissioner because I felt that leadership at the county level was lacking in terms of protection of the constitutional rights and liberties of the citizens of Coos County. I believe that there has been encroachment at the state level and the federal level upon our land use rights, upon many various public policies that portend the attrition of our civil liberties, our constitutional liberties, our property rights. And I felt that the current county commissioner panel did not adequately stand up to protect those rights as they should and as a majority of Coos County citizens would have preferred. I have a background in business. I have a small business still that I do make my living from. And that business will be continuing to run in other hands if and when I win this position three seat. But I do believe that the consensus of citizens of Coos County that I have spoken with are very concerned about the cost of housing and the role that local and non-local government plays in affecting those costs. I think that our local Coos County residents are concerned about the attrition, the encroachment on their Second Amendment rights at the state level particularly. I think that what I'm hearing is a lot of people are very concerned about the homelessness problem and about how to address that effectively on a long-term basis. And I believe also that the majority of citizens of Coos County have the view that our Coos County resources have not been ideally managed in order to enhance the revenues to the county. I also think that people are tired of policies coming from unelected bureaucrats in Salem that are adversely affecting our local economy. Particularly, I'm thinking of salmon and other wildlife policy that has not been constructive or effective for the preservation of our local salmon runs, which is one of the largest potential impacts on our county revenue. And I also think that at the county level, there is a role for the commissioners to play in decoupling from runaway state bureaucracies, such as the Oregon Department of Education. And that the belief is among citizens here that we can more effectively manage our educational system if we have local control. So I'm about local control, constitutional rights, return to first principles, and reaching out to one another to restore our sense of community through love rather than division. Way too much division in our community and communities around the country. And it's my goal to put a stop to that and restore a balance of community and goodwill in Coos County.
What are the primary responsibilities of a county commissioner? What relevant experience do you bring to the position?
The responsibilities of a county commissioner are, of course, to interface with other government agencies, to provide supervisory management oversight in county departments, and to be an interface between the citizens of the county and those larger government organizations or structures, such as the state and the federal government. I think that it's also a responsibility to, as I alluded to in my introductory statement, manage the resources of the county in an effective way. The experience that I bring that gives me the ability to do that is severalfold. Number one, I have been in small business the majority of my adult life. The business that I currently have has been underway for 21 years. It's a good, successful, profitable business, and my customers are very loyal. And they comment regularly on the profound level of service they get from myself and my staff. And I think that that really boils down to a couple of basic things. You know, we really care. And I think that that is fundamental to the function of any servant who's elected to serve his fellow, his or her fellow citizens in a role like this. We have to be focused on others more than ourselves. That's a biblical principle that I try to live by every day of my life. And I think that that portends the success should I win this seat and assume this role.
What three issues facing the county would be your highest priority to address? And how would you go about it?
Number one would be housing and the cost of housing. I believe that one of the, there are a couple, there actually are many things that affect that. And there are a few of those that are within the purview of a county commissioner. Namely, those would be zoning and land use issues. I believe that we need to recognize the zoning and land use requirements that have descended from the federal and state governments that are actually constitutionally illegitimate. I think that we need to take measures into our own hands locally in terms of finding ways to decouple from those constitutionally illegitimate standards. I think that, so that's one issue. Another issue is education. I believe that the residents of Coos County, the majority of them, are opposed to the infiltration of radical leftist policies into the educational system. I'm talking about policies like critical race theory, transgender theory. I believe that adults, I believe that parents are opposed to the introduction, the sexualization of kindergarteners, first graders, second graders, third graders talking about these issues that are not germane to their youthful, innocent lives. I think that people are very opposed to that. So I think that return to local control or a re-establishment of local control in issues like that is a second major issue for me. The third one, I think, I'm going to go back to the salmon issue. I believe that ODF and W policies have been detrimental to the preservation of our salmon runs. Years ago, we used to have hatch boxes up and down all of the river systems in Coos County and all over the state, in fact. And we had salmon runs that were legendary. And ODF and W years ago established a policy to outlaw those and went to a pure hatchery program. And those have been not managed in a way that was most conducive to the preservation of those runs. And now we see in the Coquille River, for instance, where a couple of years ago, we had three salmon come back, or 19 salmon. And this year, actually, this last year, 19 salmon were harvested for stocking the hatcheries. And this is due, I think, primarily to poor ODF and W policies that need to be, again, overcome at the local level. We should be making the determination for what is good for our salmon runs here in Coos County, not those unelected bureaucrats in Salem. So those are my, those are three of my top issues to answer your question.
What do you see as problem areas in how Coos County government functions? And how would you address them?
Well, I think, I think that the most strident example that I could come up with, Paula, would be, I believe that Coos County government mismanaged the COVID situation. I believe that there was a tremendous amount of misinformation that was at play that ended up in misguided public policy vis-à-vis the restaurant and business closures that really crippled and hamstrung the smaller businesses while promoting and even advancing the bigger ones. I believe that there were issues with the vaccination mandates and the mask mandates that were unscientific and really deleterious to our benefit as a community. I believe also that there has been a lack of proper management of certain resources that we have available to us. Timber and salmon, primary among those. And I believe that the county commissioners have a crucial role to serve in improving that situation, in enhancing the revenues that are available to us or that are actually coming to us as a county from the timber and particularly from the salmon. I mean, I don't want to beat the dead horse going back to those two, but those are, those are two amazing resources that we have available to us, among others. But I think that that's an area where the ball has been dropped to some degree.
What is your 10-year vision for the county and our South Coast community? What role should tourism and recreation play?
So tourism and recreation should play a significant role. We have phenomenal natural resources available to us here. One of the biggest problems that we have in that area is, again, the lack of the salmon runs. And ODF and W policies have precluded the growth and maintenance of the salmon runs that would bring thousands and thousands more people here every year and allow us to have a legendary tourism industries centered around that. The, I kind of, I kind of forgot the first part of your question there because there was something else I was going to say.
Sure. 10-year vision for the county?
Oh, yeah. 10-year vision. Thank you. 10-year vision for me is to decouple our county from the dependence on state and federal monies. I believe that to the degree that we are dependent as a county on handouts from state coffers or from federal coffers, all we're doing is we're taking money from other taxpayers to support our own inadequacies here. I believe that we have enough resources and enough intuitive or enough initiative and enough industriousness here in Coos County to support ourselves. And to the degree that we stop taking that money and separate ourselves from the teat of that giant hog, that we can actually establish a greater degree of freedom and self-reliance here in Coos County and establish those constitutional first principles or re-establish those constitutional first principles that really guide my thinking in everything that I do.
What role should the county commissioners play in developing new industries and businesses in the county? Is this an active or a passive role?
Well, I think, I think it's actually both. You know, the answer to the question is there are many things that the county commissioners can do to enhance the development of those economic activities. I think that, I think that certainly guiding county policy in terms of ordinance to allow greater freedom for businesses to operate in a profitable way certainly enhances the revenues to the county. It enhances the job situation. I believe that going back to the zoning and planning issues, you know, every property that is built upon in Coos County outside of the urban boundaries has to, by DEQ decree, has to put in a pressure septic mount. Now, that's just silly, in my view. Why should every building project be required a $20,000 or $25,000 septic system when a $4,000 or $5,000 one would do and would work perfectly well? The problem is that we have policy guided by bureaucrats who are not elected and not accountable to anyone and unresponsive to public input. And I think that the county commissioners have a critical role to play in providing guidance and leadership to stand up boldly against policies from the state level that make no sense for us here in Coos County. And I think that frankly, that the courage to do that has been somewhat lacking. And I don't have that issue. I have no fear at all to stand up and literally, frankly, well, figuratively poke Salem in the eye because that's what they need. They have, they're a runaway train up there. They're unresponsive to the people. They are beholden to radical leftist ideals coming out of primarily Portland and the larger metro areas that have no understanding of what our way of life is here in Coos County and what our actual needs are.
What can the county do to aid the unhoused population with issues such as shelter, physical and mental illness?
So handouts are the wrong approach. The, what we need to do is, as a county and as communities within the county, we need to provide avenues of, avenues where these people can, the ones who want help are able to get it. Now, we've got a lot of different personalities and a lot of different dynamics at play in the homeless community. Some of these people are perfectly happy living that way. They don't want to have a different life. And frankly, they, you know, for whatever reason, either they don't want the responsibility of life or whatever. And those people, frankly, in my view, shouldn't be receiving handouts. They shouldn't, they shouldn't be getting any help. They need to figure it out if that's their choice. Others have, are in this situation because of circumstances beyond their control, misfortune. And they are desirous of moving out of that lifestyle and into something more stable and contributory to the community. And for those people, I believe that our county resources need to be allocated to jobs programs, psychological help, if that's necessary. We need to have avenues to be able to afford these people opportunities to separate from drugs that are sometimes a problem with them or with a significant percentage of them. And I think that that's going to go a long way toward resolving the problem. I think another problem that we need to deal with is the influx of homeless people being bused here or otherwise transported here from other locales. We need to track those down. And we need to, we need to take legal action to stop that kind of action, that sort of activity happening. I know that people have been bused in here from all over the West Coast. And I've heard this story many, many times. And I think that's an issue that we need to deal with as well.
The present Coos Bay estuary management plan was approved in 1984 and is in need of revision. What will you do to ensure the process that began several years ago will continue and include all available data from efforts begun under the Partnership for Coastal Watershed Steering Committee and the Coos County Planning Director, tribal and others, local partners?
Sure. Well, I think that all of those, all of those interested parties, and then to add the residents of Coos County to that mix, all those voices need to be heard and considered. And certainly, I am critically interested in preserving our estuaries, our waterways. You know, I believe that we need to take great care to make sure that we don't have contaminants going into our water, that we preserve our species. But I also believe that there is a role for human development in this, in this process as well. So I'm not one of those that believes that we protect, you know, the micro leaf snail in this one little patch in order to, and in doing so, shut down irrigation for an entire valley or something like that, like we've seen with the Delta smelt in California. I believe that there is a tremendous amount of misinformation at play. And certainly, we saw this in the case of the spotted owl, where logging in Oregon was decimated, and it was all a lie. And I know it was a lie. I have a friend who was working in the administrative office of that spotted owl movement back in the day. And they strategized their lies. I know this from firsthand communication. So those are the kinds of things we need to avoid. We need to make sure that the information we're working with is accurate, truthful, that there's not a political agenda at play, and that all interests are being considered and protected in these kinds of, these kinds of functions.
With creation of the Elliott State Research Forest by the Oregon Legislature in the recent session, Oregon State University is designated to manage the forest and lead its research program in fulfilling the interests agreed upon by the various stakeholders who helped shape a new future for the Elliott. What is your view of the solution arrived at by the legislature?
Well, I believe that the, I believe that the scope of the forest may be beyond what was practically necessary. I also believe that, I mean, certainly, there is tremendous value in preserving old-growth forests. And, you know, this is for our posterity, for ourselves and our children to be able to go and enjoy these forests to see the way they work. And of course, the research in those kinds of areas is very important as well. That being said, I'm also sensitive to the fact that there are interests at work to shut down all logging and to shut down all industry and to shut down anything that, that's, anything that is, let's say, capitalistic in nature. And, you know, these are ideological arguments that are undertaken. I think that, you know, I think that the Elliott is frankly more than we really needed. I'm not sure what there is to address that at this point. It's pretty much a done deal. So, you know, I think that going forward as a commissioner, the commissioners all need to be sensitive to the various dynamics and realities that can, that can impact the development of policy. And again, these need to all be considered in light of constitutional first principles. And I think that that has been missed to a large degree.
What should the county do to address climate change in comprehensive land use planning, especially concerning forests and water quality and quantity?
Well, when you bring up the topic of climate change, you have to really get into the discussion of whether climate change, to what degree it's happening, and what the causes are. Is it really anthropogenic, as it has been claimed ad nauseam by Al Gore, who said we were going to all be underwater in 10 years, 20 years ago? The answer, I believe, is absolutely not. Is there climate change? Yes, there is some micro, some micro examples of some climate change. That's because the climate changes. It always has. It always will. We find tropical forests under ice sheets in the Arctic and in the Antarctic. We find life forms that are evidentiary of different, radically different climates throughout periods of history. It, to me, is unreasonable, unscientific, and illogical to believe that anthropogenic or that climate change is anthropogenic in nature. Therefore, I would say that the county should have no involvement in anything concerning climate change because we're not responsible for it to begin with.
How can you assure the citizens of the county that land use managerial decisions consider environmental impacts and that any conflicts of interest are made public?
Well, this is a, this is a question of stewardship. I do believe that we are, that we have a grave responsibility to wisely steward our resources. That is our land, our air, our water, our people, particularly our children. And I believe that, I believe that the policies that, that will enhance that stewardship are policies of a moral free market. One, you know, people have a problem with the free market. But what the, what the problem really is, it's a moral problem, not, not an economic one. To the degree that each of us lives our lives by a set of moral principles that is others-centered rather than self-centered is the degree to which we'll be able to implement policies that are beneficial to the entirety of the community. And that's certainly where my interest lies.
Thank you very much for the answers to all of our questions. And you may now provide us a summary of why voters should support your candidacy.
In December 2020, I co-founded with some friends a group called Citizens Restoring Liberty here in Banden. And we have been meeting weekly ever since then. And we have been implementing, we've been, we've been active in the community and active in having an influence legislatively at the city, county, state levels. And our primary focus is the restoration and preservation of liberties as defined in the Bill of Rights. It's our, our belief, my belief, that these liberties have been tritted over decades of abuses coming from the state and federal government levels. And that my position on the Coos County Commission will be a point-of-the-spear sort of role in protecting those liberties, re-establishing the dominance or the predominance of local control in regards to these policies, protection of rights like the use of our land, the responsible use of our land, the Second Amendment rights that were guaranteed in the Constitution and yet have been trespassed over and over and over again to an ever greater degree by a runaway Oregon legislature. I believe that there's been some mismanagement in terms of policy regarding our jail facilities and law enforcement capacity. And these are things that are crucially important to me. And I will always be And I will always be guided by the principle that, um, that we are to consider others as more important than ourselves and not merely look out for our own personal interests, but also for the interests of others and to have this attitude, which also was in Christ Jesus. I am a Christian and I will always live my life by the principles that, uh, guide me toward that, that loving outreach to other people, that care and concern uh, for what is the right thing. And, um, and this is true for every person. Every person is created with equal value. And, uh, that's the way that I live my life and that's the way that I will, uh, direct policy as a Coos County Commissioner. So I would very much appreciate your support in this endeavor. Um, it's, uh, it's not for my own purposes that I want to do this. It's because I believe in our communities and I believe that we can make our communities better than they are and we can do it together.
Thank you.